All right, I think we are recording and welcome to Planning Board for that's all set? Welcome to Planning Board, August 14, 2023. Our Chair and our Land Use Director will not be joining us tonight as well. I don't believe we've set up to be able to have remote participation. So that being said, as the Vice Chair in the absence of the Chair, I will be running this meeting and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The three of us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have called to order. There is no public board comment. Anybody? No? No burning desires? The first item on our list is a request for de minimis change in the absence of the Land Use Director. I went in on Monday to ask if there's anything additional and there was not. This request came in on Tuesday. I'm a little bit unclear as to why it's even a change if can I have that letter back? If the three commercial sites with the largest on the west end of the building being classified as retail. If that's the case, then does retail not include liquor store? I do not know. That would be a question for the Land Use Director who's not here. Do you, does anybody have, if anybody has any information that I don't have or I don't understand, please?
I only have additional questions.
Okay, so and you have questions as well?
Yeah.
So I'm going to table that for now and if anybody does come in while we're here during this meeting, I will be happy to pick it back up. But I do not feel that we have
Recording in progress.
It's recording on here.
Okay. Anyways, I do not feel that we have enough information to, to I certainly don't have any information enough to ask for a motion. So I'm going to table it again. If the applicant is watching us live, I think, then anyways, we're going to skip that right now. And the decisions for 525 Chase Road is something that we have. In a different folder probably. Decisions. So we have a decision. I don't see any blank spaces. Do you all have that? Do you have that in front of you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Have you had the opportunity to look it over?
Hang on, the only thing I have here is, the last thing I recall is approving approving the site plan approval. Did we have something past that that I'm forgetting?
I think that there was a review from the engineer, from our review engineer that was lacking and I think that we went ahead and approved it with the condition that it was a satisfactory review, special stormwater management system requires if analysis, if analysis fails applicant and engineer will relocate the infiltrator. That was one special condition and the drywall, the drywall was the thing in question. And actually I remember me questioning it because the review said something about the number of chambers and I said, well, it's based on volume and they specified a specific SC 740 chamber, which has a specific volume. It's all coming together now.
Yeah, okay, yeah, there we go. She'll have six SC 740 chambers that can retain the volume equivalent.
It's on the last page.
Yep.
Okay, so
Second to last page.
Since this is just a signing and I don't even know if Adam's off for the week or just the day. Would anybody have a problem with not signing this tonight and coming into the planning office sometime this week?
I can do that, that's fine.
Okay. July 24th. So simply because I don't know the procedure, typically we only need three signatures on a decision. Typically also the Chair is one of them. So I'm not sure, quite honestly, if our three signatures would be adequate at this point. I can only assume they would be since it was put before us tonight. On the side of caution, I would choose to air.
It's fine by me.
Agreed?
Yep.
Okay, super. Let me just change that, that goes with that. Okay. Well, moving right along, again, keeping up my promise to Dex that this should be a short meeting. Board discussions. We have five, four items listed. Master Plan Steering Committee, Solar Bylaw, Section Driveways and Entrances, Aquafer Protection Bylaw. Does anybody have a burning desire to speak anything to any one of those four items?
I was, I went through the solar bylaw and the driveways and entrances. By and large, I was happy with what I saw there. I hadn't had a chance to review the steering committee document or the Aquafer protection.
Beautiful, well, those are the only two that I reviewed.
I skimmed through all four of them. I just don't, I didn't do a deep dive in them. If it makes more sense to wait until the next meeting when we have our Chair and our Land Director back to discuss things further, I think that's, that would make the most sense.
Well, I think it would make the most sense, but if there was, if there was something that anybody had, you know, a strong desire to go over because they just reviewed it or I reviewed it after our last meeting and I was, I had quite a few comments on the Aquafer Protection Bylaw. The Master Plan Steering Committee, I thought that, wait a minute, was it Master Plan Steering Committee? No, it wasn't the Master Plan Steering Committee. It was the Master Plan Projection, whatever it was he gave us last time. Their approach.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't have any great comments on that, but I thought that was good. So if nobody has anything else, then we can move on to minutes approval.
Yeah.
Yeah. So minutes have been distributed. Has everybody had an opportunity to look them over?
Just finishing that up now.
And whenever anybody's ready, I would accept a motion?
Okay, I'll move to accept the minutes for the Planning Board's meeting on July 24, 2023, as well as the minutes for 525 Chase Road.
Which we can only assume were also from 724 23.
I believe also from 724 23.
I will second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved unanimously. Moving on to committee reports. Open Space Ad hoc Committee, that's me, received an email saying that we're going to skip our August meeting and hopefully plan on a September meeting. The Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee, we haven't met for probably two or three meetings, which is four or six weeks. But we do plan on meeting on the 21st, next Monday, to kind of probably corral on what we were talking about for the last seven, 12 years. Agricultural Commission. We were not able to schedule our meeting, well, we scheduled our meeting, but the room that we normally have it in was booked last month, so we didn't have a meeting last month. We will have a meeting this coming Thursday on the 17th at the Ritter Building, probably downstairs at 7 o'clock. And everybody is welcome to join, attend. We do not have remote participation. We're very, well, it's just a very laid back meeting. And check out our agenda and see if anything sparks your interest. Oh, and the farmer's market is going very well. Last, yesterday, we didn't have very good attendance by the public and we only had nine vendors. And one of our members was actually there in vending, not necessarily vending, but in a booth. And the market has been going really well. Please do come. It's every Sunday at the Ritter from 10 to 1. Capital Planning Committee is Mr. Brenner and I don't believe they're in that season yet. Economic Development Committee, I think is also him.
Yes.
Stormwater Task Force.
Meeting is going to be this Thursday.
At the Ritter?
Yes.
Upstairs probably. Or if you guys need, if you guys need the video, which is downstairs, then we're flexible because we're low tech.
Fair enough.
MRPC.
Okay, MRPC, we met on the 3rd. Not much going on. They're mostly focused on talking about applicants for open planning positions in MRPC, as well as I think in local towns. They're struggling to find applicants, so they're going to focus on interns, which I think is kind of a great idea, learning on the job while still providing a service. And that was pretty much it. Then MJTC, also mine, we met on the 9th. They were just speaking mostly on bridge improvements and street upgrades that they've done in Harvard and Gardner. They were talking about changing the MJTC bylaws so one person could represent two communities because they're finding it hard to, not necessarily right now, but in the past, they had found it hard to have a quorum. So they're wondering if they can have multiple communities represented from one person. Other than that, not much else.
Excellent.
That's it.
So backing up to the MRPC, they were looking for planners.
Correct.
I had heard that and I went to see if I could find an advertisement for planners for MRPC. And I'm not necessarily a high tech person, but I was not able to find an advertisement for those planning positions.
Okay, that's definitely something I can bring up.
Sure, I mean, and if nothing else, at least find out where they're advertising. And are they still advertising them or was that the discussion? They're going to go back to interns?
When we had the conversation, they said they were still advertising for it or looking for it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so that rounds out our committee reports and we just had somebody step into the room. I can only assume that they have something to do with 88 Mass Ave?
That is correct. I think I caught the tail end of your thing and I wasn't sure. I was getting, of course, I'm getting my hair done. Stop, I'm going down.
I'm sorry, can you please step up to the mic? Thank you. So we'll go back up to our third item.
I'm with the venue.
The podium, I'm sorry.
I was under the understanding that I didn't, that you guys didn't really want me here, so that's why I didn't show up today, I'm sorry.
Oh, we never not want people here.
How are you guys today?
Well, thank you, how are you?
Good.
Name and address?
Anastasia Halkerakis, I go by Stacy. Living address 28 Clement Road in West Townsend. The address in question, 88 Mass Ave in Lunenburg.
Okay, so you are actually the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. So we did have some questions and I'm not sure you're going to be able to answer them, but
Yeah, I'd spoken to Adam and he was like, I'm going to do, send, write everything up. You don't even need to be there, don't worry about it. So, and I know before that, that Greg Roy from Dillis and Roy had dealt with getting it to where it was supposed to be, so
Yes.
I could possibly try and answer your questions. Hopefully I'm knowledgeable enough, but I don't.
Well, my understanding was that there was a zoning board of appeals application that allowed a change of use?
Basically, when we, the zoning board of appeals, which was a few years back, was because we were trying to make it into a five unit building, but now it's staying a three unit building. So when I spoke to the new building inspector, he said that he could oversee, like, we don't really need that. We could go back to the zoning board and get it reapproved, but we don't need it because we're leaving it as a three unit building, which is what it was before.
Okay. Okay, so basically my big question right now is if we put you off for two more weeks, is this going to hurt you?
Yes, because I, because the tenant, who is up to sign a 22 year lease, needs to have whatever information to the selectmen and I don't know when the next selectmen meeting is.
Tomorrow. Do they have that ready for the selectmen?
I believe so, yeah. Is it something, like, what were the questions? If it's something that I can answer for you?
Well, I don't understand why it's, why it's actually a change at all in the permit.
That's what we didn't understand either. I didn't understand that either because I thought that, they said that a retail isn't the same as a liquor retail. There's some kind of difference. But Adam said that a de minimis request, is that what it's called?
Yeah, request for de minimis change.
Would be enough. He said it's basically administrative. Again, I'm going by what he said.
Yeah. Well, Adam is, is the administrative, yeah.
As is Greg Roy.
Oh, that's too bad.
And the building inspector is just waiting on this to give the gentleman his license for the building permit and to go before the board tomorrow.
Okay, so is your understanding that they can't go before the select board before they get permission from the Planning Board?
They can't go before the select board until they have a signature from the building inspector, which needs, let me just read what he said to me today so that we can. He said, the building inspector is waiting on requirements from the plumbing inspector and the planning board hearing outcomes.
Well, if he, if he called this a hearing, then it's not advertised that way.
That's what the tenant called it. The building inspector didn't call it that, so I'm reading what the tenant sent to me. Can I ask you, what is it that I'm asking for? Like, what is the de minimis change, basically?
I guess that's what I was asking you.
Yeah, see, I didn't understand that either.
Okay.
I thought it was something that was basically just
Because the, the document that we have here, sorry, let me scroll back up to it, from Dillis and Roy. The proposed project includes the change of use of the facility to retail. The proposed parking lot is being reconfigured slightly to accommodate parking lot restriping and to consolidate the existing curb cut onto Massachusetts Avenue. As I understand it, it's already retail, right?
Yes.
And the idea is that what is going in there now is going to be a liquor store?
Retail liquor store.
Yes. I don't understand what is going on on this.
So like I said, when I spoke to Adam, he said that it was just like one slight difference between retail and a retail liquor. I'm guessing probably because of the ABCC. That's all I can guess because I used to own a liquor store previously in the town of Lunenburg. But I, I mean, and again, I don't mean to be doing your job. I can't imagine that there would be a difference between having a retail store and a retail liquor store in that location for the work that we've done.
Yeah.
I mean, we've done everything that you guys have asked us and then some. I don't know if you guys have been by there. It's like a totally different building. It took almost a year with the highway department to get that one entrance, one exit thing going. I don't know. I'm here to plead, I guess, at this point.
Well, so we don't really have jobs. We're elected officials. We don't get paid for any of this. We have staff and they, I'm, I'm, I'm not really happy with the information that we've been provided. I have a lot of questions and I don't want to officiate any approval that we question and we don't have the answers for.
You want to start asking questions and maybe I can answer them?
I think the questions are more on the government side than, than of you. So from my understanding, my memory, and I could be wrong. I remember when this was brought to us and it was changed from, might have not been changed from retail to mall, but it was the, wasn't it changing to something so they could categorize it as a mini mall? So the new business is coming?
That went from zoning to you guys and that totally changed.
Correct, so that's gone now. So I'm wondering if because we have in our previous literature that this is going to be a mall and now it's not going to be a mall, it's going back to being retail. As far as liquor retail versus retail, I don't have that answer. And I think that might be where your question comes from. I don't have that answer. I don't know if we say yes, it's good to go, if that
Did Adam leave any notes on that? Because he said he was going to write everything up and leave it for you.
I can read, I can read to you what Adam distributed to us. Town of Lunenburg memo to Lunenburg Planning Board from Adam Burney, RE 88 Mass Ave. The board is in receipt of a request for de minimis change for the site plan approval at 88 Mass Ave. The property was approved for three commercial suites with the largest on the west end of the building being classified as retail. Currently, the owner of the property has negotiated with the tenant to use this space for a liquor store. Per Section 250 4.1G use table, liquor store is defined as a separate use, is defined, is a defined use separate from retail sales. The request from the property
Sorry, continue.
The request from the property owner is to change the assigned use for the remaining open space in the building located at 88 Mass Ave. To assist the board, I would note that per Section 250 6.1, off-street parking and loading areas, both liquor store and retail sales are classed in the same parking category, requiring one space per 250 square feet of net floor area. All other items on the site are proposed to remain the same. Ultimately, the members of the board must decide that the change would be de minimis and then make a ruling on whether to approve the change or not. Please let me know if I can be of any further assistance. Now, he sent this August 9th, which was what, Tuesday?
Yeah, I think I met with him on Friday, so probably Monday. You guys are closed Tuesday.
You met with him on Friday? They're closed on Friday?
Maybe Thursday?
Okay.
Thursday afternoon, I'm sorry.
So I went and met with him last Monday. Oh, you met with him last Friday, last Thursday? Last Thursday?
Last Thursday and then he wasn't going to be back. I was on, oh, last Monday, the Thursday before last Thursday.
Okay.
I apologize, the Thursday before last Thursday.
Okay, so then I'm going to totally put this in his lap because I stopped in on Monday and asked him if there was anything new and he said no.
I didn't have that document in my sets. And from what it sounds like, it, the only thing is just like a statement of change, like between retail and retail liquor? From what I'm understanding, from what you read off there, that's the entirety of what we're looking to at the moment? Or the entirety of what we're being asked?
It does seem that way, but if they're different uses defined on the use table, then I wouldn't. And since I'm low tech, can
It was my understanding too, I'm sorry to
Go ahead, go ahead.
Catch your thing. That it was like the slightest, easiest type of thing to change. Don't worry, Stacey, you don't even need to be there, hence making the hair appointment. I would have come in with color in my hair, by the way, just so you guys know. After I turned it on, I was like, that's me they're talking about.
Well, I'm very glad that I did make that statement and you did hear it.
I am very glad that you made it and I wasn't even sure if it was for me because I got the tail end of it and then I was like, it's got to be for me.
I was actually hoping it was for Greg Roy, but you said he's on vacation.
I apologize that he is. Honestly, I think as far as Greg goes, after he left that meeting and I spoke to him also after I spoke to Adam Burney and he said, this sounds like it's something that's like very, very simple and de minimis. How do you like those words? So honestly, I didn't, yeah, right? That's, I guess that's what they're used for.
The only unfortunate thing we have here is everybody who knew what was going on
Nobody is here.
Didn't show up.
Don't you love that? They're all on vacation. That's what happens in August, I think.
Is the difference here between just approving or determining if this is a de minimis change? I think that was the only part I wasn't sure about in the statement that you read.
It typically comes to us and, and if we don't feel that it's de minimis, okay, so going back, you guys were all here for the Lunenburg Central, the big eight acre shipping and receiving?
Yes.
They came back seven times with de minimis changes and I spoke, I spoke to that point on the seventh time. I said, after you've made seven de minimis changes, is it a de minimis change to the site plan?
Yeah.
I promise I will not make any more de minimis changes.
I mean, I was just trying to speak to the actual term. But it, de minimis change means a minor change that is negligible in the approval that was previously granted.
Correct.
Okay, so
And you don't see that as that? This is that?
I honestly don't understand why it's even needed to become a de minimis change because
That's exactly what I said too. I would think that there would be no de minimis change, that it would be automatically allowed.
And that is the only reason that I question it is because it was put forth to us as elected members of the Planning Board
Right.
that it is de minimis change, but
But again, Adam said to me, very simple, very simple. It's just, this little, like, notice the letter that I wrote was absolutely ridiculous. And I said, do I need to do anything more than this? And he said, no, that's all you need. I think it was one sentence. And I was embarrassed to even write it, but he said, Stacy, that's all you need. I just need something in writing by you. It's literally, none of those. It's literally a line, maybe, maybe a sentence and a half. Maybe a run on sentence, nothing crazy. Because I was trying to get him before he left on Thursday afternoon.
Wow, I've got a document here from 2007 in your folder.
2007? That wouldn't be mine. We purchased that property in 2020.
Right, now, this is, this is referring to Mackey, which I assume you bought it from?
Yes.
Yeah, so what, what is, is the person going to, going to bail on you if you can't get this approval in two weeks?
And again, I'm going to try my, my bestest not to cry, but I'm going to go back so you guys can get like a little brief thing. We purchased this property in 2020, I believe. It was like maybe August of 2020 from the Mackeys. It was during COVID. We at that time were running a breakfast diner and we have, we have property, a property in Lunenburg before that we had our own businesses in. Fast forward, everything seemed to be easy and when we came in and said, okay, this is what we want to do and we want to make it pretty. Went to the zoning board first and the zoning board said, Stacy, you guys always do such a great job, go for it. And then we came to the planning board and that was supposed to be easy and it turned into a little bit of a cluster and it turned into, you know, we want to do in only one entrance and the same entrance and exit, not going in one side, not going in the other side. Long story short, we're now in 2020, the end of 2023 and it was like maybe three months ago that, maybe four months ago, that Greg Roy said, finally, we're done. Like, you can get somebody in there. And we've seen many, multiple different tenants, of which none of them would have been a good use in there. And this was like the first great tenant because it's easy. It's not going to be crazy as far as traffic goes. It's not going to take up a lot of parking spaces. These people have like multiple, multiples, so they've been in the business and it's a 22 year lease. So it was kind of like, after all of that, thank God. So am I scared that I'm going to lose them? I'm not going to lie to you, I'm scared. But we thought it was, again, I'm going to say the word easy. Everything seemed to be like falling in place and it seemed like very simple. And like you, I don't understand how retail and, and retail liquor need a de minimis change, but I was told that it's very simple and it's just a piece of paper and that's what it is. Now again, Adam isn't here and Greg isn't here. Greg didn't say anything about it being, you know, being anything. He thought that it shouldn't be in front of you either.
I think to your statement about not understanding why it even come to the level of de minimis change, I think that's changing how I'm understanding what Adam wrote and I think that is the part, is this like a change that doesn't need anybody even look at it? Or does it come up to the level of de minimis? at it, or does it come up to the level of de minimis? I think is what I'm taking from the letter that Adam left us.
Okay, I'll, I'll go with that. Well, if, if, if both of you are comfortable with granting the de minimis change...
Yeah.
...then I will cede my concerns. That's the beauty of having multiple member bodies, is you don't have to take responsibility by yourself.
There you go.
And, and for that, I apologize.
No, I don't, you don't need to apologize, and I understand, like, how it seems like nobody's here, and I wasn't even here. I apologize, but I, I was, I was only doing what I was told, so...
It's just circumstantial, as far as I can tell. And as I was saying before the meeting, this is the, I've been over ten years on planning board, this is the first planning meeting that I recall that there's been three people sitting at this table for an actual meeting.
So I guess, so I guess, everybody's on vacation, except the four of us.
Yeah. Five.
Five of us.
Five of us, yep. So, with that being said, I guess I'm gonna ask you two if you're comfortable with this, and if you are, then I will go forward with it. I just, there would be a difference, I mean, there's a reason that alcohol retail versus general retail are different defined uses.
Mm-hmm.
I can only...
The ABCC would take care of that, though. If it's something that the ABCC doesn't want, then it's gonna be off the table anyway.
Okay, so here's another thing, is, and Adam is, is a little slow to pick up on this sometimes, is, and I'm very fervent in expressing my feelings about it, is that this is the town of Lunenburg, this is the Lunenburg Planning Board, we are representative of twelve thousand people in Lunenburg to present what is best for our town in our interests. Regardless of what the state tries to cram down our throat, regardless of what ABC says, ABCC says is good and is not, this is the Lunenburg Planning Board, and...
But even the selectmen, the selectmen also have a right to refuse it too tomorrow.
I assume so. I mean, and I don't even sure about the, the number of licenses that are available. I thought that we were maxed out.
I believe it's not a new license, I believe it's a transfer license, as I was told. I don't know where it's transferring from.
Oh, sounds like it's transferring from...
It's not a new license, it's a license that's transferring from another retail...
Probably from Jax, which is another...
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Which is another issue.
He's got a lot of issues tonight.
Wow. All right, I'll repeat what I said previously. If you guys are comfortable with this, then, then I'm not gonna be the holder-outer, but if somebody else wants to hold out, then that's two out of three.
So, reading through the write-up that they have, there's really no specific changes to it, other than liquor versus non-licker, which, again, I, I don't know. I would say, I would, I would be comfortable with approving a de minimis change. I don't know if that's something we can go back to Adam and say, "In the future, we need a better understanding of what's needed." Because to me, it doesn't, it doesn't, I agree with you, it doesn't make sense that it's basically just going back to the same usage that it had before with the three businesses or three units, or however you want to say it, and then it's not doing what they said it was going to do, and now it's going back to what it is, so the only change is liquor versus non-licker, and I don't know if that's even something we would have a say, and I feel like that's more of like a, like a zoning or, or select board, or...
Yeah.
I can't speak on that, but this, from my limited understanding, is, it seems like there's really no large changes. He mentioned the parking spaces, there's not any change in the parking spaces, you know, so that, you know, we're, we're good there.
Okay.
The other work that they said needed to be done...
And it's a long ways away, yes. They have to go to the building inspector, they're talking with the plumbing inspector, there's, it's a long, long ways away to even get there. But this is the first process to get us started to getting there.
Right, yeah. So I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I'm comfortable going forward at this point.
All right, super. Well then, holding up to my word, I would accept a motion.
I thank you, guys. I'm glad I, I heard you. The hair is gonna be a mess, but that's okay.
It looks great.
I watch all of you.
Don't worry, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
No, we're just doing our motion. Thank you.
So I would motion to approve the de minimis change on eighty-eight Mass Avenue. Does that sound...
I think that works.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Approved. Thank you. Best of luck with the select board.
My kids have so much stuff from the, the pottery place in that building, complex.
Yeah?
I want to go so bad.
Unrelated.
I'm, I'm very pleased with the site work that's going on there. I think that that is a much safer area now with, with the, with the curb cuts closed, and, and it's obvious to me that she didn't understand the safety aspect of that wide-open curb cut, but it's, I, I think it's, it's, it's an extremely improved site, and, and I'm glad they've done that. So that sets my mind at ease about any other problems with alcohol, I guess. So, we rounded out committee reports, and we went back to item three, so now we're on item eight, director's items, which looks empty, and it's good, because there's no director. Item nine, meeting schedule, six P.M. All board meetings are held at town hall unless otherwise indicated. Our upcoming meetings are on August twenty-eighth, and it looks like we're missing our first September meeting, and meeting again on September twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Yeah? So apparently, we have one meeting next month, after our second meeting this month. Ongoing items, there's one, two, three, four, five, six of them. Anybody feel a burning desire to bring up any one of them?
Nope.
You all have the agenda in front of you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, just for completeness, master plan, act of protection district, that's the one that I had reviewed and had a lot, oh, and it's in both spaces. Okay. Zoning MBTA communities, Lunenburg Municipal Buildings, Town Environmental Support Policy, Pondview Commons. All right, so, nothing? No burning desires to talk about any of those?
Nope.
Okay. That brings us up to public comment, and back to an empty room with no online participation provided tonight. It's my fault. Public comment is followed by board comment or concerns. None? I will take this opportunity just to mention that our current chair, as, as the elected chair of an elected body, runs the meetings, and in, in their absence, the vice chair runs the meetings. The current elected chair of this body has chosen not to partake in the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of the meeting, and again, as I said, it is their decision, and I don't necessarily, we have discussed it, I don't necessarily agree with the reasons, but it is their decision, so, and, and I don't have a problem with it, either way. I just, I feel that it's important for us as citizens of this beautiful country that everybody wants to come to and everybody looks up to, and kind of is the police dog of the world and all that stuff. I think that the pledge of allegiance is a very simple thing, and I don't think I really have anything more to say about that, but I did want to talk about it, because, because I stood up and pledged, and we did as well. Anyways, any other board comments or concerns?
Nope.
None? Okay, I guess in, in that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.